Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. And we have a quorum. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to the July 19th work session for the Cotwood Heights Planning Commission. We are excited to have, we've got a few guests here visiting too, and I think if I heard right, the the mayor may be ducking his head in at some point, so we will have more audience members. So we have a couple of agenda items to take care of on our work session agenda. We're revisiting the form-based code, and this is another bite at the apple that we get to kind of look at this, see what questions we have and interface a little bit with the contractors that have been working behind the scenes. We've got a one particular item that we'll deal with in the business session that we'll get to. I think you'll cover that under 2.0, and I don't know that we have anything additional beyond what you have, and I don't think I have anything on my side. So with that, we'll turn the time over to staff for our form-based code discussion.
I invite Mark Morris up from BOTA, he's our consultant on the project.
Great.
He's going to join us. You'll remember, we talked about this a couple of times in the past, just trying to educate some really high-level form-based code 101 type discussion on what it is and where we're looking to apply it in the city and what its role is. We've gone a couple steps further now, and Mark's here to share an update. So if it's okay, we'll spend about 20 minutes on presentation, 10 minutes Q and A, and then we will just continue this discussion.
Hey, great, it's Mike, good to be with you again to talk a little bit about some form-based code. Just wanted to make sure the technology is working.
Yeah, I think we're good, everything's projecting right, so.
I can see the presentation, but I can't, I can't hear it, and it looks like there's talking.
Oh, interesting.
I want to shoot on YouTube.
Okay. I'm not sure.
Commissioner Ebbler, can you hear us now? It doesn't, no, that looks like a no.
Huh.
Let's stop a second here. Do we think that it's on?
Yeah, everything's on, because we're, the audio is running on our end, so.
Sound, the sound is on now.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
If the sound ever cuts out, let us know.
Yeah, I was looking for the chat.
Okay. Great, so today we just wanted to kind of, like Mike mentioned, go through some of the high-level parts of form-based code and what we've been working on with staff over the last little bit. We'll talk a little bit about vision and scope of what we're trying to focus on. Form-based code itself is a lengthy document, so what we're going to talk about tonight is kind of the big pieces that as planning commissioners, you should really understand. As you know, the existing code of the city sometimes can be difficult to interpret. And so what we're trying to do here is just make sure that the form-based code has some clarity to it, and is trying to, is really going to accomplish what the city has established as the vision for these parts of the city. So. So we'll talk a little bit about structure, for some reason, it's not advancing on this.
Either up or forward, whichever one you didn't do.
Which one your computer, though?
It's changing on my screen.
Cool. And Marcus Stafford, just for the, just for the, for the public, can you describe why we're doing form-based code?
Yeah. Why we're having this discussion? Yeah, thanks. So the form-based code update was funded as part of the city's general plan update. What it allows us to do is target areas that are kind of prime redevelopment areas in the city, largely along Fort Union Boulevard and the commercial intersection there. Right now, we have the mixed-use zoning designation, but the same code applies to a property, whether it's a quarter acre or 10 acres in size. The form-based code gives us a little bit more control and a little bit more context sensitivity to to really establish the vision for the form and the look and the feel of buildings we want, specific to which area in the city we're in and what's around that development. So it's a more context-sensitive redevelopment tool that focuses more on the look and feel and the design and the aesthetics than, you know, than the strict regulation on uses and, you know, strict setbacks and things like that. Our goal is that we'll be able to tailor redevelopment in a way that really makes sense in any given area of the city, much better than we can do with one blanket zoning designation that we have today.
So right now, our code focuses much more on what the purpose is and what people do inside the property, not necessarily how it looks, and this kind of flips that a little bit, focus on what does it look like, we're a little less concerned about what you're doing in the building. We want it to work with what else is going on, is that?
Yeah, the use is still a consideration.
Of course.
But it kind of says, instead of looking first at use and then at form of the building, we're just going to kind of spot that, we're going to focus primarily, you know, initially first on the form and the massing of the building and sort of like the design of it. Not necessarily the architectural level detail, but more of the presence, the proximity to the street, some of those elements, and then the use follows, so.
Right. And any history that you can leave in that this has been done around the country, and this didn't just start 10 years or 20 years, this has been around for a long, long time.
Yeah, absolutely, and that.
Thank you for that.
You know, I think those are really great questions. Form-based codes are used all across the country, there are several cities across the Wasatch Front that use them as well. Like Mike mentioned, they're very context-sensitive, so you can't just grab someone else's code and say, we're going to do that, you have to go through a calibration process, which is what we're, what we're trying to do. So establishing that context, what we're going to talk through tonight is really the structure of the code, what's, what's in there, the priorities of the code. As Sam mentioned, there are things that are higher priority in a form-based code and things that are kind of take second seed. And then we'll talk a little bit about the process, what that looks like when an applicant comes in, what is the, what does that typically look like? So as we go through this, if you've got questions, by all means, let's, let's talk through those. So form-based code structure basically has different chapters, different sections that give detail on what those requirements are. A lot of these in the city already has code requirements for when it comes to landscaping signage, all of those things. But what the form-based code does is really focuses on where that building is located on the site, how it contributes to the public realm, and certain design elements that we'll say are more difficult to change. So these are not design guidelines that get into the nitty-gritty of it has to be a specific style of architecture or has to use specific colors. That's not what the form-based code focuses on, it really focuses on the difficult-to-change parts of development. The vision for, for this process, really what we have done is spent, spent some time going through the draft general plan, that whole process that you've gone through as a city to establish goals and priorities. The intent is to look at those priorities, that vision, and say, okay, how do we update our code to reflect that? The development that we get is merely a reflection of the code that requires it, and so if the development is not getting us what we want, that's merely a sign that the code is not requiring what the city wants. So pulled a few things out of that draft general plan when it comes to land use, the land use goals, preserve existing neighborhoods by introducing new development in a way that is compatible with existing neighborhood character scale, form density. So like Mike mentioned, the context is what really drives the conversation to say, okay, here are certain things that would be appropriate in one neighborhood isn't necessarily appropriate everywhere. So the way that kind of the mixed-use zone works currently is it's kind of like, well, it's all of these places sort of treats them all equally. The form-based code really looks at how do we break it down into the context of that neighborhood. The establishment of discernible Cotwood Heights downtown, city center, town center, the development of key nodes along, along.
Okay. And we have a quorum. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to the July nineteenth work session for the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission. We are excited to have, we've got a few guests here visiting too, and I think if I heard right, the the mayor may be ducking his head in at some point, so we will have more audience members. So we have a couple of agenda items to take care of on our work session agenda. We're revisiting the form-based code, and this is another bite at the apple that we get to kind of look at this, see what questions we have and interface a little bit with the contractors that have been working behind the scenes. We've got a one particular item that we'll deal with in the business session that we'll get to. I think you'll cover that under two point O, and I don't know that we have anything additional beyond what that you have, and I don't think I have anything on my side. So with that, we'll turn the time over to staff for our forum-based code discussion.
I'm going to invite Mark Morris up from BOTA. He's our consultant on the project.
Great.
He's going to join us. You'll remember, we talked about this a couple of times in the past, just trying to educate some really high-level form-based code one-on-one type discussion on what it is and where we're looking to apply it in the city and what its role is. We've, we've gone a couple of steps further now, and Mark's here to share an update. So if it's okay, we'll spend about twenty minutes on presentation, ten minutes Q and A, and then we, you know, we'll just continue this discussion.
Hey, great. It's Mike. Good to be with you again to talk a little bit about some form-based code. Just wanted to make sure the technology is working.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good. Everything's projecting right, so. Yeah, and I did just.
I can see the presentation, but I can't, I can't hear it. It looks like there's talking.
Oh, interesting.
I want to shoot on YouTube.
Okay. I'm not sure.
Commissioner Ebbler, can you hear us now? He doesn't know. That looks like a no. Could stop a second here. Do we think that it's on?
Yeah, everything's so, because we're, the audio is running on our end, so.
Sound, the sound is on now.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Good. Well, if the sound ever cuts out, let us know.
Yeah, I was looking for the chat.
Okay. Uh. Great. So today we just wanted to kind of, like Mike mentioned, go through some of the high-level parts of form-based code and what we've been working on with staff over the last little bit. We'll talk a little bit about vision and scope of what we're trying to focus on. Form-based code itself is a lengthy document, so what we're going to talk about tonight is kind of the big pieces that as planning commissioners, you should really understand. As you know, the existing code of the city sometimes can be difficult to interpret. And so what we're trying to do here is just make sure that the form-based code is, has some clarity to it, and is trying to, is really going to accomplish what the city has established as the vision for these parts of the city. So so we'll talk a little bit about structure. For some reason, it's not advancing on this.
Right, either up or forward, whichever one you didn't do. No.
Which one your computer, though?
It's changing on my screen.
Cool screen.
And Marcus Stafford, just for the, just for the for the public, can you describe why we're doing form-based code, why we're having this discussion?
Yeah, thanks. So the form-based code update was funded as part of the city's general plan update. What it allows us to do is, is target areas that are kind of prime redevelopment areas in the city, largely along Fort Union Boulevard and the commercial intersection there. Right now, we have the mixed-use zoning designation, but the same code applies to a property, whether it's a quarter acre or ten acres in size. The form-based code gives us a little bit more control and a little bit more context sensitivity to to really establish the vision for the form and the look and the feel of buildings we want, specific to which area in the city we're in and what's around that development. So it's a more context-sensitive redevelopment tool that focuses more on the look and feel and the design and the aesthetics than, you know, than the strict regulation on uses and you know, strict setbacks and things like that. Our goal is that we'll be able to tailor redevelopment in a way that really makes sense in any given area of the city, much better than we can do with one blanket zoning designation that we have today.
So right now, our code focuses much more on what the purpose is and what people do inside the property, not necessarily how it looks. And this kind of flips that a little bit, focus on what does it look like? We're a little less concerned about what you're doing in the building. We want it to work with what else is going on. Is that?
Yeah, the use is still a consideration.
Of course.
But it kind of says, instead of looking first at use and then at form of the building, we're just going to kind of spot that. We're going to focus primarily, you know, initially first on the form and the massing of the building and sort of like the design of it, not necessarily the architectural level detail, but more of the the presence, the proximity to the street, some of those elements, and then the use follows, so.
Right. And any history that you can leave in that this has been done around the country, and this didn't just start ten years or twenty years, and this has been around for a long, long time.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, you know, I think those are really great questions. Form-based codes are used all across the country. There are several cities across the Wasatch Front that use them as well. Like Mike mentioned, they're very context-sensitive, so you can't just grab someone else's code and say, we're going to do that. You have to go through a calibration process, which is what we're, what we're trying to do. So establishing that context, what, what we're going to talk through tonight is really the structure of the code, what's, what's in there, the priorities of the code. As Sam mentioned, there are things that are higher priority in a form-based code and things that are kind of take second seed. And then we'll talk a little bit about the process, what that looks like when an applicant comes in, what is the, what does that typically look like? So as we go through this, if you've got questions, by all means, let's, let's talk through those. So form-based code structure basically has different chapters, different sections that give detail on what those requirements are. A lot of these in the city already has code requirements for when it comes to landscaping signage, all of those things. But what the form-based code does is really focuses on where that building is located on the site, how it contributes to the public realm, and certain design elements that we'll say are more difficult to change. So these are not design guidelines that get into the nitty-gritty of it has to be a specific style of architecture or has to use specific colors. That's not what the form-based code focuses on. It really focuses on the difficult-to-change parts of development. The vision for, for this process, really what we have done is spent spent some time going through the draft general plan, that whole process that you've gone through as a city to establish goals and priorities. The intent is to look at those priorities, that vision, and say, okay, how do we update our code to reflect that? The development that we get is merely a reflection of the code that requires it. And so if the development is not getting us what we want, that's merely a sign that the code is not requiring what the city wants. So pulled a few things out of that draft general plan when it comes to land use, the land use goals, preserve existing neighborhoods by introducing new development in a way that is compatible with existing neighborhood character, scale, form, density. So like Mike mentioned, the context is what really drives the conversation to say, okay, here are certain things that would be appropriate in one neighborhood isn't necessarily appropriate everywhere. So the way that kind of the mixed-use zone works currently is it's kind of like, well, it's all of these places sort of treats them all equally. The form-based code really looks at how do we break it down into the context of that neighborhood. The establishment of a discernible Cottonwood Heights downtown, city center, town center, the development of key nodes along, along Fort Union in particular, all of the areas under consideration for this form-based code are on Fort Union Boulevard. So this isn't a code that applies to the whole city. It's really just looking at through specific nodes. In the future, the city wants form-based code is something that the city has a good grasp on and wants to start applying it to other places. It's very easy to expand the neighborhoods that that applies to, whether it's Bengal Boulevard, other kind of important commercial areas. Usually a form-based code in cities like Cottonwood Heights is mostly about redevelopment. You have, you know, the gravel pit is one area where it's almost a blank slate. That's a very different, a different approach as far as form-based code goes. But the way that a form-based code is structured is easy to add those on when, when the time is right. Any questions so far? So far, we're, we're doing good. Hey.
Well, I do have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you have part of the city that comes up next to like Sandy City, is there any coordination between the different planning commissions and city councils to accomplish what you're talking about here?
I, yeah, that's a great idea to coordinate. I don't know that Sandy City uses form-based code in any of their city yet, but I think any of these notes were kind of on the, you know, on a city boundary. I think that would be a great.
Would be nice to coordinate, right?
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's, I mean.
They're not.
No, no, I, each city has its own land use and decision-making authority. I will say there's some you know, more regional grant kind of planning projects where you do try to create some cohesiveness between cities. It's never going to be, you know, adopt the same exact standards as we have, so we can create one look and feel, but like we did an active transportation plan that tried to plan out active transportation across six different cities. So everyone was on the same page. So you see some of that, but not down to the level I think you're asking.
I will say that some of the kind of form-based code boundary that we're looking at is near Midvale City. That's, it's not on the sandy side of our border, but on the midville one. And I know they have some really similar goals for their downtown and their commercial redevelopment on that same border. So I do actually think um, this direction is compatible with what it abuts next to in Midvale, based on what I've read of their plans.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we helped Midvale a few years ago with the form-based code around their main street area, and so it was very much just about that part of the city, but I would expect eventually they would expand with other parts that abide.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. Other considerations as far as goals, economic development, housing, these are all things that are intended with a form-based code to address, again, these kind of community-wide goals, vision, how does the city continue to pay for the services that residents expect? How do you make sure that, that the type of development that comes in is supporting city goals as opposed to just kind of whatever, whatever comes in the door? Um, the priority-wise, oh, wrong, wrong direction. So as I mentioned, really what we're looking at are three nodes in the city. These are really nodes where change redevelopment is highly likely. So rarely in a, in a city like Cottonwood Heights do you look at non-commercial areas of the city, so.
Does everybody see where, where things are? Any questions about what we're looking at? You can see the foothill or the the Fort Union area on the left.
Yeah, Fort Union running is kind of the main corridor horizontally, and then Union Park Center is going to be on the left in those colors. And then the right, down to colors, or the east is like.
House and south closet.
So that's, north is up. On this.
And we'll go through each of these nodes and kind of talk, talk through kind of how these, how these concepts have been, have been developed. The priority is really to look at, okay, the primary commercial route through the city where you've got these nodes of opportunity, the town center, opportunity, Union Park area, there's a lot of opportunity there for change and making sure that the code keeps up with, okay, what are the goals of the city to, to accomplish those? Um, as I mentioned, we, we kind of organized the considerations and form-based code into, into these tiers. Primarily, we're talking about form district, which we'll talk about, building type, which, you know, a lot of times the primary concerns are about building heights and setbacks and things like that. Those are in our kind of primary considerations category. And then street type, for the most part in Cottonwood Heights, that's going to be how does this development improve the public realm as far as public sidewalks, street trees, those types of, those types of interventions. Secondarily, as we mentioned, use is part of the conversation. As you'll see, we'll look at St. April's. Use is a much broader category where we're used to very much like, okay, what does, you know, a C1 zone require? What does a C1 zone very, you know, very specific use approach? This approach really says, okay, let's allow for a lot of different options as far as use and have more of the focus be on the site design and how the building is going to contribute to, to the community. And we'll look at some, some of these things. Parking really is focused on location on the property. Tertiary considerations, landscaping, open space signage, the things that are really important to the kind of implementation, but don't usually drive a lot of the big, big decisions around, around development. I'd say tonight, probably the, the main thing that hopefully we can make sure you take away is the conversation on form districts. Form district is really going to be the closest corollary to a zone. So the understanding of how a form district really drives decisions, I'd say is a, if, if that's the only thing we, we covered tonight, that's really something that's important to understand. Form district really focuses on, again, the context of that particular location. And so when a property owner comes in or a developer comes in, the first question you're going to ask is which form district are we talking about? That's going to then determine, okay, here's our maximum building height, here's a setback requirement, here are things as far as how, how much of the property it needs to front in the street. So form district is really the first question. The, we've established four form districts in this particular code. As I mentioned, if the code expands, you would, you would establish new form districts for those areas. So if the gravel pit then develops, those would have different form districts established. Again, focusing on that context and looking at, okay, what are the things that are happening or need to happen in order to bring about change in this particular area?
Yeah. How did we identify the districts that we were focusing on with these nodes? Just out the gate to be able to focus on those three districts?
Yeah, that's a good question. So first of all, most codes like this focus on primarily commercial areas. So we looked at the Fort Union corridor and said, okay, here are primary commercial nodes that exist. One of the things that we kind of established was areas that were already zoned mixed use. Replacing a mixed-use zone with a form-based code zone is a pretty clear kind of changeover. So that's really where we focused on, and then kind of establishing property lines is still, okay, where would we stop as far as where the form-based code is, is going to apply. But in the long term, it can certainly get bigger. Form-based code doesn't do much as far as single-family neighborhoods are concerned. Those are neighborhoods that aren't going to change much. We really aren't going to have a lot of conversations around new development in those, in those neighborhoods. So generally, that's how we've kind of established where kind of the boundaries of each one of these ones.
Also add quick, the, those commissioners that are familiar with Plan Development District, the PDD tool, that is, that has some form-based code principles to it. It's a little more flexible in terms of use and context. If you look at the, the areas of the city where the Plan Development District can be applied and compare it with this, there's a lot of similarities there. But that PDD was the original tool to try to identify future redevelopment areas and guide that. This is taking that kind of one step further, but the areas are very similar.
We also have the Fort Union Boulevard Master Plan. So I think all these factors put together, we was like, oh yeah, this is kind of a a first area, a first span to, to take a look at.
That's great. In the, I believe it was the Master Plan Steering Committee that I was a part of, I know that we were discussing a lot of different community nodes as well, where Fort Union specifically, there's very little redevelopment opportunities over there, just because it's big box commercial. So I was curious why we focus on kind of a big area that there's a lot of big box there versus some of the community nodes that were displayed in the steering committee, I guess, master plan.
Yeah, see, excuse me, some of those smaller opportunities as we move up the corridor. This picture here is really just that big box area in Union Park Center. So I think it, there is more of a mix across the whole thing, but again, maybe there's an opportunity to expand it to more areas, but I think with how context-sensitive it is, the bandwidth had to be, let's start somewhere and, and kind of see how we like it, how it grows or doesn't, and go from there.
Is there any other contrast to the PDD? Just watching the pros and cons that we went through with the North Gravel Pit, things that we should, that you've seen that like, okay, we're, we're going to address this, what we found was a limitation with the PDD, or do you think this, this is a stark contrast, this won't be an issue because it's different?
This is maybe just my opinion, so take it.
Which is fine.
Well, but I think the PDD is stuck somewhere between form-based code and conventional zoning.
Yes.
Uh, it, I think the end result typically worked, but the process was fairly cumbersome and time-consuming and frustrating kind of for all parties involved. So this is trying to just get off the fence and, and tip into what I think the intention of the PDD was, which is context-sensitive redevelopment.
I do feel like there are times that the developer was kind of playing, guess what we're thinking with both us and the ARC and probably to a degree, the city council, and hopefully my, my, my hope is that this kind of narrows things a little bit for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely do.
Good. Yeah, great, great questions. The establishment of form districts, as you'll see from the colors on the map, in this particular corridor, we've established four form district types. So Union Park Center, which is, you know, already developed, it's got lots of surface parking, it's got a pretty wide mix of use that we sort of saw as one particular form district type. The town center will will look at, so we've got town center as kind of its own thing, and so as the town center develops, the form-based code is there to make sure that any, anything that comes along as far as town center development goes is supported by what the code is actually going to, going to require. The third is a, what we call a general district, which is those that are kind of fronting Fort Union Boulevard. And then the last, we call an edge district, which is a residential transition zone. So looking at those areas that front or butt up against single-family neighborhoods, how does the code give some kind of transition buffering between higher-intensity nodes and the residential areas around them? So the, the three notes there, as you, this is kind of established, all right, here, here is where those form districts and how they would apply. And then as the code kind of goes through, that, that first consideration again is, okay, you're in this bucket because that's the form district that, that you're in.
Um, just want to note on that last slide, this might be helpful. While the city owns the Hillside Plaza, you can see the town center area expands beyond that. So the city does, will have full control over what Hillside Plaza itself looks like, not necessarily the surrounding area. So I think it's key to still have that town center designation to make sure that vision, you know, at some point reflects across that whole intersection area.
But if somebody were to want to to, to build something new there, then form-based code would apply, correct?
Yeah, if it was adopted, it would be, as redevelopment occurs, we, we wouldn't obviously own the property to where we'd be like, we're the ones saying, you know, as a community what we want, but we would have the code in place to say, these are the parameters for redevelopment by a private.
Do I remember that the intent is that it could apply, not that it would apply? In other words, they could opt for that code or they could opt for the existing code.
Yeah, I think our, we need to finalize how we're going to approach that once we get closer to adoption. But I think the plan is to go talk to property owners and see if they'd like us to initiate that for them, educate them on what it is and what opportunities it gives them. If not, they could keep their current zoning designation and, and then essentially apply to have form-based code apply on those properties.
A rezone. So we, we've been kind of looking again, context sensitivity to what makes sense. So we thought, well, maybe with the properties that are currently zone mixed use, maybe we would just proactively change the zoning there. But on ones that aren't, maybe we would more just change the long-range vision for them, so that if they redeveloped and rezoned, it would need to be consistent with form-based code. And then with maybe some of the other commercial properties, yeah, we could approach them and just say, what are you, yeah. So I, I think that's still being teased out, but as with any zone change or long-range plan change, sometimes you're changing the actual zones, and if you're just changing the long-range vision, so.
Yeah, and typically, I'd say a lot of form-based codes that are adopted, there's a grace period where a property owner can kind of choose which category.
And if there's an application already in, you're yeah, you're kind of working with what was established.
Yeah, and sometimes the city will put in an incentive to say, you know, if you go with the, the new form-based code, here's, you know, an expedited process or some other type of motivator, but giving people that opportunity to decide which they are more comfortable in.
I, I'm hoping that you can share with staff and with the city council, with us all the stories for how that could work, because we, obviously, in the state value property rights, but hope that we can incentivize, I mean, it would a lot of this hinges on a geographic area, being able to be influenced positively and however that's happened in other cities, it would be great to know what the playbook is for making it good for the property owners and something they would want to be a part of.
Sure. I think one, one thing as far as form-based code goes, as I've mentioned, the expansion of use where someone can really choose which use, I think, gives a lot, the property owners a lot more leeway to say, well, here's, here's something that we'll pencil as opposed to what the city wants to have pencil. And so the use broadening of that is a big incentive to say, okay, we're not going to have kind of such a stronghold on what that uses, we really care more about what, how is the site designed? How does it contribute to the public realm? And that use is a secondary consideration.
Well, again, also still saying some uses aren't allowed.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a.
It's not like a carte blanche, like, do whatever you want.
I, and we'll get into use in a, in a minute, but the, the kind of establishment of those district types, looking at even within these form districts, saying, okay, in the Union Park area, you've got development of a certain kind already. Redevelopment or addition to that would take a certain, a certain form. I think the Union Park area, looking at how do we make that more of a mixed-use area as opposed to just office towers and big box, really looking at how does that become more of a mixed-use place generally? That, again, the use is secondary to how do we, how do we kind of make that a center of its own? So, so the Union Park Center, again, that's a, a specific district. The town center type, that scale is, is clearly much, much lower in height, but having spaces that are pedestrian-rich, that have lots of things to see and do, really, this is focused on things that are attracting residents of Cottonwood Heights as opposed to Union Park Center, that's a regional employment destination, those are regional retail destination. So the scale of who's the audience for that space again is a, is a consideration. The third, Fort Union along the, along Fort Union Boulevard, that's a, you know, a, a busy corridor through the city, very economically valuable. How as the Boulevard changes, if the city's rebuilding it and adding more infrastructure to it, if we're improving walkability in certain nodes, how does the development contribute to that walkability? You can't just put in a sidewalk and street trees and say, oh, it's now, it's now walkable. It's really having things that are contributing to that. Does it feel like you've arrived somewhere? Is it easy and comfortable and safe and all the things that, that's, that's pedestrian? Scale of that again would be, would be different from the town center, different from, from Union Park. And then the, the last of those for the, the residential transition district, usually in residential transition districts, you're going to see things that are far more residentially focused. We're talking row houses, town homes, things that kind of act as a transition from commercial to residential areas. So things, some of these are in Utah, some of these are not, but that, that form district kind of gives us a little bit of a, some options as far as that goes. How are we doing on time, Mike?
We're, wait, I don't remember what time we started.
Five minutes? Okay, great. The use, use tables show up in the form-based code. As you can see, they're organized by form district. We've got a few designations here in these tables where you'll either see a P for it's permitted, across, across the board that's permitted. If it's a U, that means it's permitted, but it has to be in an upper floor of the development, and then the N, not permitted.
And we'll. And we'll send these slides out to you guys after the meeting, so you can have time to engage a little more with them. But wanted to have Mark's explanation of them first before you saw them.
Yeah, thank you, Sam, the um, the tables here, again, this is a lot of information, but the, the key driver here is saying. Okay, we're, we're broadening use choice for property owners for development. And really saying, is it appropriate in this context, should it be on an upper, upper floor only? And this usually is because, okay, if we're developing a town center, we don't necessarily want residential on the ground floor. What we really want are, is retail restaurants, things that are public facing. So having that discussion to say, okay, what uses are appropriate, and what level of that, of that development. Um, the final thing we'll, we'll talk about a little bit is, is what this process looks like. We've been working with staff for a couple of months to figure out, what's a process that makes sense for the city as far as. When an application comes through the door, what does that look like? First thing that would happen would be a pre-submission meeting with staff. Where property owner would sit down to go through, what are these requirements and what do they, what do they look like? Before they get to the point of having the formal application to the city. So planning staff would review and comment and go through all of those. If the project meets certain criteria and it meets all of the requirements of the form base code, it would be an administrative approval of the, of the development. So some of the triggers we've got here on the right, developments of, of less than one acre. Uh, structure below twenty thousand square feet and developments located in basically all but the residential transition zones. Those could all qualify for that administrative process where it makes it a really clear, simple way for. Staff to go through and approve developments that need, again, meet these requirements, meet the vision for uh each of these, each of these nodes. As that process happens, there's always something that comes up where a design exception is needed or requested. Or an applicant says, hey, I have a really good reason why I cannot meet this particular requirement. So the first thing that would happen is you got an architectural review committee. They would be the first ones to review and try to come up with a design solution to resolve that, uh, that exception. So I sit on a review committee for Farmington and their form base code, that process usually is, is pretty straightforward. And there's usually like one issue where it's like, hey, we can't quite meet this, what can we do to? Basically get, get there with that, that approval process. Usually that's pretty simple, if the ARC comes up with a request of the developer or the property owner and they're not happy with that. They can then take that to the planning commission to talk about, okay, the ARC has given a recommendation for a design exception. We, we don't want to do that, they can then go to the planning commission to kind of talk through, um, through those, uh, those points. So the intent is that a lot of these are a little bit easier to get through that process and approval. And have, uh, again, have those, those design discussions with, with the ARC that would kind of be driving those, um, those exceptions.
I will add again, just to reiterate, because I know it's in the right hand side where it's like less visual. Not only would those design exceptions we just talked about have to go through the public meeting process, but if it's bigger than an acre. If the structure size is larger than the twenty thousand square foot threshold, or if it's in that residential transition zone, it would just have to go as well. So that there's more of a public process for those um projects that maybe are nearer to neighborhoods. Um, and also the intention was that there's more of a public process for anything really large that's happening, but the, the ones that are smaller scale. And more of the commercial areas, it would be again, context sensitive where it's less of a impact.
So based on those, those, the, the areas, the zones we're talking about, um, how many of the parcels right now are more than an acre or less than an acre?
It's a good question, and it's one that we've actually brought up as well, and I think we could find that out, but I don't have a count right now.
So I think that's going to be a point of discussion for us is those, those first two criteria, because that, that will determine how often it's going to end up in the public eye. And I'm gonna just kind of spitball here that, uh, initially I, I anticipate that, that. Uh. I would recommend that we, we are careful about where we kind of involve the, the public at a certain point. And maybe at some point as we get more comfortable, we can turn up that threshold, not worry about it as much, but.
Yeah, it'll be important to fine tune it to what makes sense, um, we've kind of put an acre in from some of the preliminary. Um, analysis we did, looking at what's there, but I think it can be a discussion certainly.
And in, during this process, we've been talking to other cities that use form is good to understand what their triggers are. I think in Clearfield, if I remember right, it was five acres, that they were like, well, if it's smaller than five acres, we're gonna go for it. But like, oh, that, that seems like a pretty broad.
Yeah, we were like, well, we don't have a lot, those five acres are bigger, but they don't have as much development, so it makes sense for them, but what makes sense for us, so.
On that issue, any other thoughts or feelings, and don't hesitate if you have a different feeling than I expressed.
I was gonna bring up the same thought, as far as the percentage of what's acceptable within that, an acre seems, I mean, quite large. Considering of those corridors right there, so I mean, that criteria, if we're willing to kind of start with that, maybe we end with that. But I do have a little bit of concern with that, just right out the gate.
So do you guys have in mind maybe a different suggestion of a threshold you'd be interested in, like more of a half acre, or what do you think?
I, I think I'd like to know how, like, the ratio of that within the district codes currently.
We can do that.
Do that through your GIS person, then you can know kind of, okay, how many, how many parcels are we really talking? And the, again, the residential transition, those are the ones that are right adjacent to residential, they all go through a public process. The acreage size and building size doesn't matter there. So those, the, the design is those are the more sensitive areas that are gonna butt up against. Single family, you know, established residential development, a- and we agree, all of that is sensitive. An example right now is in, in the mixed use code, um, there are uses that are permitted and conditional. The, uh, retail use is a permitted use until the space that the retail use takes up is more than twenty five thousand square feet. Then it becomes conditional, so the twenty thousand square foot thing is loosely modeled on that concept. You know, an acre in the Union Park Center is pretty small, acre certainly on Fort Union Boulevard is large. We've tried to build in guardrails, we'll keep refining this, this is a, a, a first dab at it.
Come back with some numbers.
So it's along the same lines, you know, I was just looking at a building that's twenty five thousand square feet and it's quite large, right? But that, it was a single level, like, build out for, with a mezzanine, right? So you think about, oh, well, that's only twenty five thousand feet, people start putting second levels in there, now it's fifty thousand, right? So, so it's kind of that, I, I would think if the. I'd like to understand the intent of twenty thousand square feet, is that intended to be the footprint?
Oh, good question.
Is that intended to be occupiable floors? Um, I think that, that just could be worked around.
Good thing to clarify for sure.
The balance between administrative hygiene and keeping us out of the weeds, but also making sure we have such an engaged citizenry. That I think there will be safety for you from the staff standpoint, this, this will have the appearance to some that this is just like. Staff, don't wear your pretty little head, staff will take care of this, and I know that's not the intent, I know.
I do want to, just, just on the record, want to clarify, we have a lot of tools like this built into our code today, where we, we have a ton of permitted uses in the code that. That the commission doesn't see.
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's not dissimilar to the, you know, it's just where do you draw the line between administrative and, and coming to planning commission? But it's not, it's not completely, uh, this new concept that's not around in, in practice already.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Ebbler, anything that you wanna, we're getting to the end of this item, do you, anything you want to clarify?
Yeah, I, I. Had a similar uh comment to Commissioner Chapel about uh whether or not this was air rights versus, versus footprint. Cause the twenty thousand struck me as odd, one, one of the things that I, as we were talking through this, it, it kind of. It's always this concerning thing of like, the, the engagement with uh the constituency that the, that. The commercial space is going to serve versus, you know, the needs and the ability to get development through the process. And I was wondering if we could put in a mechanism where, um. Uh, I understand that the, that this gets triggered in the residential transition zone. But there could be things in which, based upon the topography of the land, and the build out of the building, that there, there's, this will certainly impact. The, um. Uh, use or I, I. Rights of, of potential residents, and I'm, I'm wondering if we could put in a mechanism in which. Uh, if residents have the right to petition this, so that it would go through the same process of something like of the residential transition zone or whatnot. I, 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 I understand we have to balance this in terms of, you know, the rights of developers versus the rights of, of residents. But I'm just concerned that there are, be, because of the topography of Cottonwood, that there could be certain buildings that. By all intents and purposes, satisfy the FBC process, but certainly would infringe upon um existing residents. And they would want to say.
We can do a, a map analysis of. Just a rough analysis of where the public process would apply versus where it wouldn't, just based on parcel size. We can include, we can try our best to include what you're talking about as well and see if there are any sensitive parcels maybe. Outside of that residential transition zone and bring that back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, and i- it's just weird, but I mean, one of the things that came to mind was in, in the conversation about Hillside Plaza, uh. Year and a half ago or, or whatnot, um, and, and I understand that the development parcel is larger than an acre. Um, but you, you know, let's, let's just, let's just pretend that, you know, it got carved up and, and. And uh, it was going private development and um, it got subdivided and an acre was, was, you know, point nine, five acres or. Or, or whatever else, but all of a sudden someone wanted to build a fifteen or twenty story building. Or, or, or a building that would, that would block views of, of people in the surrounding neighborhoods, I mean, that. The public participation on that process would probably be helpful.
Yeah, I think it would still go at that point, because of the square footage.
Right.
Have to be that it, like, to, to not go through the public process, all three of those things would have to be met.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we can continue to kind of finesse those to, to maybe capture some more concerns. More areas of concern, I think, that's why we come and share it, and so we get your guys' feedback before it comes for action.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a thing of like, you know, clearly, you're never gonna make everyone happy. But i- if, if, uh, you know, as a surrounding community or neighborhood is just vastly against something. Um, and there's not a public participation process in that, I, 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 I think that would be a miss.
That is not our intention.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, great, well, I appreciate your, your time tonight, and um, we'll be back to.
We'll be back.
To talk about this, but we'll have a little bit more information on kind of parcels that may or may not um fall under those categories. And then we can, like, like, sense this, keep kind of finish.
Keep workshopping it, we, we're moving at a great pace on this, I feel like, we've made a lot of progress, but. We have the time we need to get it right, and your feedback is really instrumental in that, so I'll send the slides that Mark shared with you guys, so you can look at it more in detail. Um, and then as ever, if you have questions that come up in between meetings, you're always welcome to reach out to staff and we can look at that for you, so. Thank you to Mark for being here.
Okay, that was great, thanks for your time.
If you could also send over some just example communities outside of the state as well that we could look at, I want to say. I, I think this was adopted, was it Rosemary Beach and Seaside down in thirty eight, was that kind of where form base started? Yeah, and those are incredible communities.
Which that's great if you've got a blank.
Start with, yeah.
There's some also work in the Wausatch, so we can send those over if you'd like to like.
That'd be great.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, we're ready for our uh business session agenda?
Yeah, thanks, we just have the, the one item, we've got some minutes, but just the one um potential action item on the agenda tonight. It's a land use math amendment and a zoning map amendment. Um, just some context, it's sixty eight fifty one Big Cottonwood Canyon Road, however, not the full parcel as, as it exists today. You type that address into a, you know, Google or, or an app right now, you'll see, it comes back as this entire fifteen, almost sixteen acre parcel. They are not proposing to rezone the entire parcel, the, the subject of the request tonight is. As shown here, it's about a three acre piece of that, that larger fifteen acre parcel. Um, what they're requesting, and, and if you drive by there, I'm sure everyone's familiar with it and has seen it, there's a, a cul-de-sac that was built. I think in the nineties, um, as part of phase one of this Canyon Creek subdivision, that just was never, this was phase two, it was just never finished. So that's, that's the su- subject parcel that we're um considering tonight. Um, so it's, it's just over three acres um that are affected by the proposed rezone. There's a, a, a lot line adjustment being run concurrently by the applicant, that doesn't come through any sort of public process. That's just an administrative process, but it does play into staff's recommendation. They're requesting two things, one is an amendment to the general plan land use designation. Uh, this as a, a refresher, the land use designation is basically the, the policy recommendation from the general plan. That, that staff in the city uses as a kind of a future planning tool, it tells us where, what do we want this general area to be in the future. The zoning designation, which they're also requesting to change, is, is basically that corresponds to the, the use restrictions. And the regulations as they apply on the property today. When we're considering a zoning change, and the, the proposed zoning change is not compatible with the existing general plan land use designation. We want to make sure those two are compatible, so we have applicants apply to amend both maps. So general plan land east map is the future, future vision, it's a policy, it's not legally binding uh today. The zoning designation is the, the laws as they apply on the property today. They're proposing to amend both, the land east designation right now, again, for this fifteen acre parcel is mixed use. Um, they're requesting that this three acre portion of it be amended from mixed use to residential low density. Uh, and then concurrently with that, they're also requesting that the zoning be amended from F one twenty one, which is a foothill residential zone. Which was just kind of a, kind of a holdover zone that was applied to this, this whole area when this area uh annexed into Cottonwood Heights in two thousand and five. They're proposing to, to amend that from foothill residential to R one eight, uh residential single family. The property owner is Walker Development Partnership LLC, uh, the applicant i- is Gilson Engineering. Um, Gilson Engineering is representing the owner, and again, the, the parcel size being affected by the rezone is just over three acres. You can see here, um, kind of a better shot at that cul-de-sac area that's at the end of the existing subdivision. Kind of up to the, the top right of the, the cul-de-sac is Big Cottonwood Creek, which serves as kind of a natural boundary. That's essentially where that proposed property line is going to be, serves as a pretty natural border between the area requested for rezone. And the rest of that fifteen acre parcel. Again, this is what I just explained, just visualize, you can see what the amendment would, uh, would result in. This is the land use amendment, the brown there is mixed use, the tan is residential low density. So the requested land use is the same land use you see pretty much everywhere else in the surrounding area that is already developed. The undeveloped area and the old mill building itself has a feature designation of mixed use. Uh, but everything else that's built is residential low density, including the Canyon Creek subdivision, uh, which you would use to access this property. Current zoning F one twenty one, um, that's a, it's a foothill residential zone, doesn't even really make sense. Uh, that it, that it applies here, which is why we, we think it's just kind of a holding zone that was applied with, uh, at annexation. Uh, that requires a minimum lot size right now of half an acre, uh, among other kind of foothill oriented. Landscape preservation requirements and standards and things like that. Um, really seems to make more sense up in the foothills, uh, you know, of, of Wausatch, up above Wausatch Boulevard than here, but that's the zoning that, that we have today. Uh, they're proposing R one eight residential single family, the eight corresponds to if, if a new lot were to be proposed. It has to be at least eight thousand square feet in size. The lots, um, in the Canyon Creek Estates subdivision, the phase one of it that are already developed, are all a little over eight thousand square feet. But they do have that same R one eight designation, I think on average, they're about ten thousand square feet. This is the, uh, this is kind of hard to see, there's a lot of detail here, not meant to be able to read it all, but this is the, the lot line adjustment, the record of survey that they submitted. Just showing that they have submitted a concurrent application to adjust the boundary lines. And, and it's the same scope as the, the parcel being proposed for rezone. The applicant has stated that their intention is just to continue, you know, to build out phase two of this single family subdivision by plating out lots around the cul-de-sac. You know, they've stated it's about seven to eight lots, that will be a subsequent process that, that we go through. Um, but if, if the reason is approved, all those lots would be subject to just the, the R one eight development standards. This is, this looks very similar, but this is the old Canyon Creek Estates subdivision plat. And you can see even, this was recorded in nineteen ninety three, even this plat is, is titled Canyon Creek Estates Phase One. The property we're considering tonight is, is labeled right here as future phase two. It's been the intention all along that, that that would be a, a phase two of this residential single family subdivision. Uh, you know, so much so that this was called phase one back when it was originally done, and the, the entire cul-de-sac was. And the, the entire cul-de-sac was already constructed and is existing today. Commission's authority in this, uh, this is a legislative land use application. Uh, we, we are changing policy and law as it applies on the land, so that means that the final decision is in the hands of the city council. So the commission's role is to hear public comments, take the formal public hearing and then send on a recommendation of the city council after you've discussed it. Um, yeah, and, and discuss its, its impacts and its merits and concerns and anything else you have. This was also, um, just so you're aware, introduced to the city council last night, just so they, they had a heads up that it's coming. So, so they are aware that this is going through this planning commission process. Staff recommends approval of this, subject to completion of the proposed lot line adjustment. We can't apply a new zoning until the new parcel line exists, um, and the zoning they're showing. You know, the, the, the three acre parcel doesn't exist yet. So we need the lot line adjustment to happen, be finalized and recorded. And then we would, um, you know, that reason would become uh, effective. And we would build that into whatever approval ordinance uh, that the council adopts, that that law on adjustment has to happen first. Uh, the findings for this recommendation, the proposed land use and zoning, we found to actually be more compatible. With the immediately surrounding development pattern and, and, and the access um, into that site. This area is, is clearly meant to be accessed via that cul-de-sac. Uh, you know, looking at the land use of mixed use commercial development, doesn't make a lot of sense uh, to access via a cul-de-sac through a, a little residential neighborhood. And, and looking at the old plats and development pattern, you know, it's clear that the intention was for this area to be developed as single family homes. Um, the original, like I just said, the original tenant was a single family. And then Big Cottonwood Creek provides a natural buffer and transition to future adjacent development areas. So there's no concern here that we're, we're over zoning an area if, if maybe there is a different vision elsewhere on this fifteen acres. Um, I don't think that really ever naturally would have included this parcel, just because it's separated. By the creek and it's accessed by that resident, the cul-de-sac. So we are recommending approval of both the land use map amendment and the zoning map amendment. I've got model motions. This is listed as one agenda item, but we would request two separate motions, one for the land use and one for the zoning. Um, we noticed, I just, I don't have a slide, but we noticed um, property owners within a thousand feet posted a sign and, and publicized this everywhere. Um, I got a couple of questions, but no formal public comments were submitted to staff ahead of time. Question?
I think I heard the sign lasted about five hours.
Nice, wow.
So I, I, I do have some, some questions, so um. Based on the fact that the cul-de-sac is in place, I mean, are we looking at? Obviously, I know you guys sometimes get to function as historians, like, was this just kind of a mistake or an oversight? Or, you know, was there an intent? Because it does, e- even with the creek, I mean, there are places where. Bridges are created to, for, for access over, you know, over our waterways in the city. Um, is, is it a? Reduced access and street frontage that would change the way the mixed use? Could, you know, the capacity of the mixed use, like we talk about all the time, like the congestion. Or uh, higher density areas or more developed areas?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, is there, I'm, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here. Is there a reason why um, that parcel would? Help? Possibly as the mixed use is, areas, zoned areas are.
Yeah.
About uh, as far as flow and circulation?
In terms of the original intent, I've heard anecdotal stories, the owner and the applicant are here, so I'll defer to them in the business meeting to speak to that. Um, what I've heard is that it was always planned to be residential and they just wanted to wait while there was some heavier equipment operation taking place down there. There is still, when you look at the, the broader scope of the parcel, quite a bit of access here.
The road crosses the creek there, is that right? Like where the white is?
Yeah, yeah, right here. That's where the, the trail crosses over, I believe, too.
Correct.
Um, so, so we're not, um, we, we did do this analysis and, and we think, you know, you, you could, you're right, you could bridge in there. But where this, this cul-de-sac has existed, you know, it's older than the city is. Um, you know, I think if we were to look at any sort of future development, even some different type of land use pattern. In the area, there's still plenty of, of room in here where you would have a, uh. You know, just from an engineering implementation perspective, it'd be much easier. To do that elsewhere than having to worry about the creek, especially where we've got this, you know, this pending sense of lands ordinance. What we're trying to buffer and, and lessen impact. I think we wouldn't want to immediately jump to, well, let's access here and bridge over the creek. Um, we, we want to leave that area alone as much as possible.
Okay. So, so in that same vein of the, the waterway and the, the sensitive lands. You know, that cul-de-sac actually gets a little close to what looks like that riparian corridor. Is that something that would apply with the R one eight?
They, so what, yeah, the standard today is they need to meet Salt Lake County Flood Controls Regulations, which I think is like a twenty foot top of bank setback. Which is actually the same as what's proposed in the, the current slides amendment as well for residential. That would apply, that would apply at the subdivision level.
Okay.
Our new slides ordinance would not apply, because the application's been made as a.
It depends on the subdivision. It depends on the timing of the subdivision. But what I'm saying is regardless, the, the county standard and the proposed sled standard for riparian setback is, is the same. Where they're consistent now in single family residential zoning designations.
Is there a historical approved flat for this, pre? The city's inception?
Just, just this one, um, which was ninety three. Um, thi- this was phase one of the, the subdivision and then this, you know, that parcel. It's, it's not a platted parcel right now. It was left out of the parcel, but labeled in the phase one plat as future phase two. And then the cul-de-sac, obviously, the infrastructure was built uh, with phase one. And you can even see back in uh, ninety three, you can see the, there is some sort of uh, waterway setback platted onto that. So I, you know, I think you could expect something consistent with that, hearing them. Other questions? Make sure, Evler, any, anything you want to clarify or ask? Or comment?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. Um, Isaac. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else before we close here? Yeah, entertainer motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second, second, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
I.
I.
Like the records reflect, I did make it back.